Okay, good evening, Lakeville. This is the Lakeville Select Board meeting acting as the Wage and Personnel Board as needed. April 11th, 2022, 6:30 PM from remote locations. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording the meeting? The ones raising their hand, okay. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the April 11th, 2022 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam and you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv backslash. So, we just had our election last week and you're truly is beginning her next term. So, the first order of business after an election is what we like to call reorganization of the Select Board. So, that means as we usually vote a chair and a vice chair. So, I will actually step down from the chair and nominate Rich LaCamera to be the chair. As in traditional fashion, with the exception of the last couple of years, because there's been a lot of changes, it was always the person going into their third year that would be the chair. So, this would be going back to this tradition. So, does anyone want a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of Rich LaCamera being the chair?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I. Go ahead, Rich. And Fabian, I. All right, so do we want to do the vice chair next? I'll let you, Rich, you're the chair, I'm gonna let you take over from right here. It's been a long year.
I understand. I'll entertain a motion to appoint a vice chair. Okay. I'll make a recommendation to appoint Leah Fabian as the vice chair.
Can I second myself?
Yes, you can.
I second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
The camera, I.
Okay.
I guess also at this time, we appoint Representative Director of Veteran Services. I'll entertain a motion to appoint a Director of Veteran Services.
I would like to, if Lorraine can do it, appoint Lorraine to that one. I don't know, Lorraine, if you can do that one.
Sure, I can do that one.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll step down and make a motion to appoint Lorraine Carboni as the Director of Veteran Services.
Okay, so I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. The next one is the Representative for Plymouth County Advisory Board. I entertain a motion to appoint somebody to the Representative for Plymouth County Advisory Board.
I nominate Leah Fabian.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. The next one is the famous parking clerk.
I'm really good at that, I'm happy to do that again.
Okay, motion, we appoint Lorraine Carboni to that.
I'll second that motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. There is some other positions here that get appointed as well. There's a, I guess we'll go one by one. The first one is having to do with the designated person to work with the Town Administrator and all the departments for the budget. This has to be for fiscal '23, which isn't, we haven't finished that budget yet. But anyway, so it's up to the board what they want to do.
I'll appoint Rich, motion to appoint Rich, because we're still in the same year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Next one is the School Department Liaison, which was, which was me. I really don't think we need this appointment, but it's up to the board. There rarely has happened any activity, you know, about, you know, anything to do with the School Department, but if somebody wants to do it, it's fine with me.
Well, I mean, actually, I thought we did the Superintendent and I thought, Lorraine, that was, I thought that was great. So, I would appoint Lorraine, make a motion to appoint Lorraine.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. The next one is the Council on Asian Liaison, which was Leah.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Leah Fabian.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. The next one is Department Head Meeting Liaison. Once again, since Ari has got on board here, nobody has attended the Department Head Meetings. I'm not, no Board of Members, no Board of the Selectmen have attended. So, once again, is this something we really need or not? I mean, we certainly at any time could go to one of the meetings if anybody wanted to do that. So, I'm not sure this is necessary, but.
I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, I think if the Town Administrator decides he needs, you know, a Select Board Member there, he can let us know, so.
Okay, the next one is the Park Commission Liaison. So, I don't know, we want to continue with that person as well?
I'm happy to do that unless.
I'll nominate, no, I'll nominate Leah.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, next one is the Regional Finance Committee. I've been a representative of the Regional Finance Committee for the last three years. You should note that that is in the regional school agreement, but even though we've asked a number of times from the, from the School Committee Chairman to hold a meeting for this year, they have not done that, which is kind of disappointing, so. But anyways, so I don't know if they're gonna call one between now and the end of June, but it is a requirement that the Regional Finance Committee votes and makes a recommendation to the School Committee as far as the budget is concerned, but there has not been any meetings.
Well, I'll nominate Rich for that position.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. The next one is the Union Negotiations. We'll be coming up with Union Negotiations in the spring of '23. So, we need a representative to work with the, with the Town Administrator. So, anybody want to be nominated to do that?
Rich, I'll nominate, go ahead.
No, you go, Leah.
I was gonna nominate Rich because, as well, keep it the same.
I'll second.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, that's it, we have to do for now, the next ones aren't due until the end of July. Okay, next on the agenda is Select Board Announcements. The Lakeville Lions Club is happily holding their Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 16th, 2022, at 11:00 AM. It's shot, the event will take place at the Lions Club on 170 Main Street. The event is open to children nine years and younger, and please bring your Easter basket. Give me an opportunity to take pictures with the Easter Bunny. The Aponequod Boosters will be holding a fundraising spring flower sale at the Lakeville, at the Town House, located at Two Precinct Street on April 15th and April 16th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So, please support the Aponequod Boosters. Anybody else, any other announcements?
I think, um. I, I can make an announcement. We did have a meeting last week with some of the APC folks with Representative Schmidt, Representative Oral, and Senator Roddicks wasn't there, but we had a pretty good meeting on some of the weed removal that's gonna take place at Long Pond for the summer. They're gonna start filing for permits, so stay tuned. We may be seeing some weeds out of Long Pond this summer. I know a lot of folks are looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you. Number three, Town Administrator Announcements, Ari.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few announcements here. The Police Department has implemented its body camera, body worn camera program. The program is funded by a $40,000 grant about the purchase of 22 body cam units, which will be worn by officers in the field. And this goal is to continue the trust and positive relationship that the LPD has built with the community. The Lakeville Fire Department will be sponsoring a large animal rescue class on Saturday, May 21st. Programs being paid for by Bill and Stables and 21 agencies from around the region will be participating. A Select Board Member Fabian and I have been working with Serpent on a funding proposal to Representative Alton Claus for the development of replacement for the Snake River Culvert. Congressman is soliciting local entities in the 4th District for infrastructure funding concepts. This proposal grew out of a conversation that Chair Fabian, sorry, that Select Board Fabian, Member Fabian and I had with the Congressman several weeks ago. Serpent has been very helpful in putting the concept together. We are preparing to apply for a municipal fiber grant from the state, which is administered under the Aegis of the Community Compact Program. This project would involve extending fiber to town buildings, which are now part of the network, including the transfer station, animal shelter, Old Town Hall, possibly Assawampstead Elementary School, we're working things through with the school, they're done that now. It's a 5% match, but that would be provided through in-kind services, mainly the work that Paul McNally provides and help put it together. The Town, as you know, the Town adopted the Community Preservation Act at last Monday's election. Implementation will require a number of internal measures that are currently underway, including setting up the billing and so on. We will be providing an overview of the implementation process at an upcoming board meeting. And finally, the FY 2023 budget will be posted on the Town's website this week, well in advance of Town Meetings, so hopefully if anyone has any questions or members of the public are interested in learning more about the detail, feel free to give us a call or speak with your board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. Okay, next on the agenda is to meet with the Fire Chief to introduce newly hired Fire Department Personnel. Chief?
Thank you, sir. I'm here to introduce five new firefighters, two full-time firefighters and, excuse me, three full-time firefighters and two on-call. The two of the firefighters are, were previously temp positions, be put in place for COVID. And then one of them is a new hire, replacing somebody that transferred out to Foxborough Fire Department. The on-call firefighters are getting us up to our, what I like is to have 20 on-call firefighters. I think that's a good number for us and it's what we're budgeted for. So, I think if you, I'm gonna go over their, some of their credentials and introduce them and you're welcome to speak to them directly as well. And I think you'll join my, I'm very pleased with their credentials and I think we're fortunate to secure some of these people and bring them into the fold. And it's my sincere hope that we were able to retain them. So, the first person I'd like to introduce is firefighter Dick Velez. Dick lives here in Lakeville. He's, I think he's been a lifelong resident of Lakeville, he's at least, he's lived here for quite some time. He comes to us from Oak Bluffs Fire Department out in the Islands. He's actually currently enrolled in the Fall River New Bedford Fire Academy, so he's proceeding towards becoming a certified firefighter, one and two. Firefighter Velez is also a very experienced paramedic. He's been a medic for 14 years and he was actually our Lieutenant Sylvia's trainer back when Lieutenant Sylvia was securing his paramedic license, so it's kind of come full circle. So, it's, that's firefighter Velez. Next up is firefighter Craig DiCosta. He lives in nearby Marion. He comes to us from Brewster Fire Department where he was a full-time firefighter for just about three years. He also has a lot of experience, he was in Marion Fire Department. So, in total, he has 11 years' experience as a firefighter. He is certified firefighter one and two and he's also certified company officer and he also has a fire instructor certification. I could go on for about 20 minutes going through all his training certificates and certifications. We're very lucky to have him. He's wrapping up his paramedic program. He is on schedule to be licensed by June if all goes well and we're happy to have him on board. Next up is full-time firefighter Ryan Rebelo. He currently resides in Tiverton. He is, or we took him away from Newport Naval Station Police Department, where he was a full-time police officer and he also worked part-time as an EMT for Fall River Fire Department. And he's on schedule to become a licensed paramedic by August. Next up, we have Nicole Bostic, firefighter Bostic, lives by, lives in East Taunton. She is, she's an EMT and she's currently employed at Morton Hospital. She's a recent graduate, graduate of Bridgewater State University and she will be attending the Caldwell Academy in Fall River this coming July, where she'll get her firefighter one and two certification. Tyler Letourneau is our newest addition. He lives in nearby, nearby Millboro, excuse me. He works as, works for Brewster Ambulance as an EMT. He also is registered for the Caldwell Academy out in Fall River this coming July and we'll get him in the fold as a firefighter one and two. They're all been active in the department already, except for Craig, who starts his first day tomorrow. Gonna be fortunate to have him on board as well. I'm looking forward to having him on there and here they are.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Help me out, I don't have the information about the appointment dates here, Chief. Tracy, maybe I ask you. Do they all get appointed on a yearly basis or this is permanent?
We're not appointing them anymore.
Oh, okay, thank you. That's why there's no dates here.
Yeah. Well, we could say.
Alrighty, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question.
Yeah, sure.
Like you had alluded to that three of them are full-time and two are part-time. Who's our full-time?
Dick, why don't you wave, wave to the, to the board, please? And he's, he's my, my most senior new hire. We hired him first and where's Ryan? Ryan, my wave, hello? So, these two represent the, the new positions, the positions that were temporary. And if you, over to Craig over here on the right, you can wave over there. He starts tomorrow and he's also, he's the, he replaces the firefighter that went to Foxborough Fire Department. Nicole's been on, what, about a month now, Nicole? So, she's been very active, she's been coming back for emergencies. She has a few calls under her belt and she's been training, putting a lot of extra hours. And Tyler over here is our newest addition. Tyler, are you doing, what kind of work are you doing for Brewster? Are you doing 911 out in Plymouth?
Ah, yeah, that is correct. I work down at Station Six in Cedarville on a 911 ALS truck.
Tyler's in the process of getting signed up on our vehicles and brought up to speed and everything that Lakeville Fire Department does.
So, are all these candidates, they're all full-time now?
So, the last three that I introduced are on-call.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And I just have to ask this quick question. Nicole Bostic, Leah, is this your niece?
No, it's not my niece.
Oh, my gosh.
But I do have a niece, Nicole Bostic. It is not a popular name, but.
Played basketball for Bridgewater State, so we're actually gonna challenge the PD to a game now.
Okay, that's like really weird, because my niece plays basketball. Are you sure you're not my niece, Nicole?
Um, I mean, who knows? Small world.
No, right?
The benefits of fire departments is all about it.
Yeah, well, welcome to everybody. It's really nice to have everybody here with us. I'm sure we'll see you around the station. I know I've seen Dick Velez working, he was cleaning everything. The one day I was at the fire station, so. Nice to have you all here, welcome.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, welcome, we really appreciate it. I know that the Chief has done a great job here trying to, you know, hire experienced and good people. We know that you guys will do well too, so we appreciate you coming to the town. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Number five is review and vote to approve the warrant articles for the special time meeting and a vote to approve the final warrant article for the special time meeting on May 16th, 2022. We are going to review and vote the warrant articles for the special time meeting, but because there was a few issues with some of the zoning articles and whatever, we're not gonna vote to approve the final warrant tonight. We'll probably talk about a meeting that'll probably be scheduled next week. So anyways, so. The special time meeting. Is gonna be held on, excuse me, on Monday, May 16th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. And the following articles are gonna be voted on to be put on a special time meeting. Ari, can you share that or?
Sure, I can, I believe Mr. Hassett's here as well. So, the special town meeting articles are closeout for FY '22. There's a transfer from free cash for medical supply, to medical supply issues in fire, as well as a transfer for excess snow costs.
Can I stop you there, Ari, please? I mentioned, can you share the document possibly?
Oh.
Because we have to read these into the minutes, you know? So, if you could just share the.
Really have a hard, Tracy, do you have electronic?
Yeah, I can share it.
Thank you, appreciate it. That's okay.
I'll try, because I don't know if I can share and type at the same time. So, let me try.
Do you want one of us to read them, Rich, or?
No, we're gonna read them, I was just trying to show the public, that's all. All right, if we can. So, Article number one is to see if the Town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,639.28 from free cash for the following unpaid bill from prior fiscal year or take any action thereof. And it has to do with Zoll Medical Corporation for medical supplies from a prior year. So, the board, do you want me to read them all and then approve them all together? You want to do them individually?
Doesn't matter to me. I was gonna say, I know they're posted, because Ari checked in the packets posted too, so.
All right, so we'll vote all of them together then. Is that okay, Tracy?
Um, that's fine, however you want to do it.
Okay. Article number two is to see if the Town will vote to transfer some of $100,000 from free cash to supplement the appropriations stated below, which were previously voted on Article One of the May 10th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021. For various departments are taking the action there too. And basically, the $100,000 is for, $10,000 is for snow and ice wages and $90,000 is for expenses. If any of the board members have any questions while I go through these, please stop me. Okay, Article three is to see if the Town will vote to transfer from the unused balances of capital project identified below the sum of $96,200 for the capital project stated below and anything incidental or related there too, including, but not limited to the purchase and installation of furniture, equipment, supplies or take any action there too. So, basically. These unused capital project balances, we're gonna transfer to use for other purposes. The first one there is Select Board Financial Software of $1,412.50, ambulance replacement of $137.02, turnout gear of $1,284.73, generator senior setup 641135, database software $6,077, police cruisers replacement $1,806.76, generator town offices $25,0093961, air scrubber $2,410 and cruiser replacement of a cent, one cent, pickup truck $92.20, radio replacement of $47,740.54, mower replacement of $2,450.47 and Z-Track mower with equipment of $437.31 for a total of $96,200. You may say, well, why are we doing this for one cent? Well, unfortunately, this is the way it works. You have to close out these balances in honor to close out the account. One of the things I wanted to note here, that the replacement radios, originally, we appropriated $47,740.54 for radio replacements for the fire department, but we got a grant to do that, so that's why that money was not used, so that was great. Okay, so, a transfer of the unused funds to the following fiscal '22 capital projects. Number one, Fire Department Command Vehicle Replacement $65,000. Public Works Tow Behind Air Compressor $30,000. Public Works Used Cab and Chassis with Equipment $1,200 for a total of $96,200. Okay, that's it. So, I'll.
Just have a quick question. I know it's, you know, it's $1,200, but the used cabin chassis with equipment, going back to the capital plan that we received on 3/21 that we had voted on.
Yeah.
I know that there was a cabin chassis equipment, but that was out for $90,000 in FY '25. So, I was just, it just kind of confused me a little bit on this.
I think that's a used chassis. Todd, you wanna answer, Todd Hassett, Town Account, you wanna answer that question, Todd?
Yes, Lorraine, this was originally appropriated a year ago at Annual Town Meeting. And the bids came in 12, the lowest bid came in $1,200 over our appropriation of $80,000. So, it's a, it's a prior year, it's an FY '22 capital and that's why it wasn't on the new five-year plan. It's a supplement to tidy that up for Public Works.
Okay, so then out in FY '25, this would just be a new one?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, I believe so, yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to vote to approve the warrant articles for the special time meeting.
I'm moved.
Are you second, Leah? You're muted, but okay. That's all right.
There we go. All right, I don't know why I'm having a.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. And as I said, we're gonna have to vote the final warrant. We're probably gonna set us, but the meeting sometime next week, so we'll discuss that a little further as we get it on.
Mr. Chairman, do we, do we need to vote this as the final warrant for the special?
Yes.
No, not yet, no.
Yeah, there's a possibility you may be adding something to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Depending on what you decide to do.
We're gonna talk about that, um, Lorraine, at number, uh, where are we here?
Seven.
Seven, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All right, so, um, the same thing in number six, we're gonna review and vote to approve the warrant articles for the annual town meeting.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
So, um, items, uh, articles one through six, are fine. Articles seven through ten are being worked through with town council. And would be, would need to be discussed probably at a special meeting, uh, a little, uh, later date.
Okay, so you want to approve the, uh, one through, what'd you say, seven?
Six.
One through six, you want to do that, we'll do that.
Yeah, there's a little bit of language to seven, not much, but, but si- six, yeah. I, um, um, give the board and for the public just giving an update on where we are and all this. So seven through ten are related to, um, uh, our zoning related. Um, and there's been some back and forth with, um, town council regarding some aspects and some edits and so forth. I believe Mark Resnick is on, is, is with us tonight. There he is. And, um, um, Mark, could you give an update on where things stand with town council?
Okay, we received the comments from town council this weekend. I reviewed them and, spoke with town council this afternoon, uh, went through all the, uh, their suggestions. And, um, I edited the versions, but they really should go back to, to her for one last look through, uh, before, uh, it's presented to the, uh, the select board.
So, yeah, so, so I think if we, if we can just, um, talk about a special meeting next week, we'll be in good shape.
Okay. All right, so you want me to put one through six? We want to approve one through six?
You can.
Or you want to wait?
Um, it, it's really, it's, it's really up to the, the board's pleasure. You know, the, the one through six are fine. So it's, it's, it's kind of your call.
We're gonna confuse you, Tracy? You want us to wait? Trace?
It's, sorry, my keyboard ran out of batteries, so I'm trying to replace the batteries.
One of those weeks, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, um, you, it's up to you. If you want to approve one through six tonight, you can. If you don't, you can wait till, we get the rest of them. It's all up to you guys.
Save a little time next week.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? We'll go ahead with those six? Okay. All right.
Do you want me to read them, Mister Chair?
Go ahead.
All right.
Don't bother me.
So I make a motion that we put the following articles on the annual town meeting, uh, warrant. Article one, to see if the town will vote to determine the salaries of all elected officers and to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, such sums of money as may be necessary to defray town expenses, for the fiscal period July one, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three inclusive. Said sums to be allocated in accordance with the budget document to be presented at town meeting and to make appropriation or take any other action relative there too, proposed by the select board. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the park department for the fiscal period July one, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any other action relative there too, proposed by the select board. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, such sums of money as may be necessary to operate the landfill transfer station for the fiscal period July one, two thousand and twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three inclusive, and to make appropriation or take any other action relative there too, proposed by the select board. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, borrow or otherwise provide a sum of money for capital improvements and equipment and all costs incidental or related there too, and to authorize town officials to take such action and execute all documents as may be necessary, to effectuate the purposes of this vote or take any action relative there too. Technology system improvements, seventy-five thousand dollars to come from free cash. Cruiser replacements, one hundred thousand dollars to come from free cash, a ladder truck, one point four million, uh, which would be a lease purchase under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C. Roadway improvements, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from free cash. A front-end loader with equipment, two hundred fifteen thousand dollars from free cash. Track seal and seal coat parking lot for the transfer station, twenty-five thousand dollars, solid waste retained earnings. Uh, preliminary design for a senior center addition, forty thousand dollars, La Baron mitigation. Uh, John Pond Park building demolition, fifty thousand dollars from free cash. Uh, and replace Clear Pond, dollars coming from park retained earnings, also proposed by the select board. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of adding to the stabilization fund pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, or take any action relative there too, proposed by the select board. And Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purpose of adding to the other post-employment benefits trust, also known as OPEB, or take any action relative there too, also proposed by the select board. So I made that motion.
So that's a motion?
Yep.
Okay, you want us? Lorraine? Want to second that?
Sorry, I was muted. I second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I?
AB and I.
Ah, the camera, I. Okay.
Mister Chairman? Would it be appropriate to table the other, the other four until the next meeting?
They don't have to be tabled because we just accepted, you know, you know, the one through six, and then when we have our next meeting, we'll add the other ones, and then we'll vote for the final warrant.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, number seven, is discuss the process for exercising, the town's right of first refusal regarding the Lakeville Country Club, Chapter sixty-one A and sixty-one B, uh, removal. As the board knows, uh, we received, uh, information that the, uh, Lakeville Country Club is, is going to be sold under Chapter sixty-one A and sixty-one B. If you recall, um, that it's been going on for a couple of years, that, uh, they came forward with another purchase and sale agreement. There was problems with the deeds. The purchase and sale agreement wasn't valid. And now they've come forward with a new, um, proposal. So what we need to do is, is to talk about the process and what we want to do, moving forward here. As, uh, the board has seen, um, the town administrator has sent emails out to, um, the planning board, to the open space committee, to the conservation commission, to have them, uh, review the documents and provide us with any comments. And, uh, the plan then was to have a meeting with them, um, to discuss the pros and cons of, um, of, uh, either refusing or accepting, and or putting it on town meeting, uh, to have the townspeople vote one way or the other. So, um, Ari, do you want to say where, where we are right now and what we're gonna do?
Sure, Mister Chairman. Uh, I don't know what you're gonna do, but I'll tell you. I'll be happy to discuss some of the options that, so we have on Mark here as well. Um, so, um, um, at this point, you have a couple, you know, think of it as like a flow chart of choices before you. Um, the, the board has the ability on its own to decide whether or not to exercise right of first refusal. That can be as expansive or as narrow a process as you want it to be in terms of who participates or who you bring into that process. The, um, you, you could decide to, on your own, you could decide during consultation with other committees. You could decide to send it to town meeting, um, uh, which would require a two-thirds vote on town meetings part to, uh, decide whether to move forward. Um, if it did go to town meeting, or if it did go, or if we decide to exercise right of first refusal, period, um, you would have to have a ballot question. Um, because the, uh, the amount is just too much to be able to handle within our levies, so it'd have to be a debt exclusion. Um, that would have a material impact on, 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 uh, tax bills. Um, in addition to that, um, I think there's probably some question in terms of what would be done with the property. So if, if the board wished to really explore this, um, in the short time we have available to do that, because I understand the hundred and twenty-day period ends at the end of June. Um, but if the board decided, if we're interested to get into that, um, uh, probably my recommendation that we bring on some type of consultant to look at developing a business plan, figure out what that looks like. Um, I don't know if we'd have time to do that or not, but it's not an ideal situation in terms of acquiring of, an operating facility like that, if, if we're supposed to be a business operation. Um, so, um, that would be one question to, to, to keep in mind. Um, the law is very clear, um, the choice between for the town is whether or not to exercise the right of first refusal on the sixty-one A and sixty-one B properties. That is not the entire fifteen million. Uh, there's a contiguous property that's non-sixty-one A, sixty-one B, which is part of this transaction, I believe, with this, that's, that's being discussed, but is not, um, a portion of which the, the town has a, a right of first refusal on. Um, the, um, sixty-one A, sixty-one B properties together add up to, um, sale price of thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. I would imagine that if the board exercised right of first refusal on that, that the seller would probably want, you know, just want to put the whole thing together. I don't think, be much use for the contiguous properties not to sell. So I think that's probably how that would end up. So effectively, your number may be fifteen million, but in terms of the right of first refusal piece, it's thirteen, seven, two, five. Mark, do you have anything else you want to add?
Not really. The only thing is at some point, um, the, uh, board would have to hold a public hearing. If they wanted to, uh, determine, uh, and exercise the, uh, right of first refusal or, um, assign it to, uh, another agency of the Commonwealth or private, uh, nonprofit conservation group. Otherwise, I think Ari went through it all.
Yeah.
Mark, Mark, um, you, um, is the planning board gonna discuss it on Thursday night?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, I think what's, uh, being proposed is that, you know, since all three boards, including, four boards, including us, we have the chance to talk about it, then, um, we should, um, set up a meeting, um, next week and, um, looking at the schedules, I would think Monday's the holiday, so we can't do it Monday. So I would think we would propose maybe doing it on Tuesday or Wednesday, you know, with the latest, so, um, I don't, I want to make sure we don't conflict with anybody's others' meetings, so they, they can attend. So does anybody have a preference on next week? No?
I'm double checking. Let me just, just want to make sure I don't have a conflict.
Mister Chairman, just to be clear, on that agenda would be the, um, the right of first refusal question. And we also, I, I would recommend that we would also add those, those, um, zoning articles as well, assuming that they're ready to go.
Correct. Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Or Wednesday would work for me.
Okay, I would, I would like us, Ari and, uh, and Mark to, uh, try to make sure that the, the, the planning board and the conservation and the open space committee attend this meeting is pretty important.
We'll reach out to them tomorrow. Yeah.
And make sure they, check their availability, and if it has to be Tuesday, it has to be Wednesday. You know, it could be okay, but I think it's important that, uh, that everybody's there because, like Ari says, we have a hundred and twenty days, you know, to make a decision. And if we're going to, uh, include it on the special time meeting, then we're gonna have to do it that night. Okay, to be put on for the May sixteenth. And then the special election would have to be done forty-five days prior to, I believe it's July second, if I'm not mistaken.
It would be, um, would have to, yeah, the prior, July second is the deadline. You basically would be talking about, I've talked to the town clerk, you basically would be talking about a special election around June twenty-seventh or so.
All right.
So we'd just be getting it in.
May twenty-seventh, you mean?
Um, the election, it'd have to be forty-five days from the town meeting.
Oh, I'm from the town meeting. It's the other way. I'm sorry. I thought it was, okay, I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I had it the wrong way. Okay.
Mister Chairman, if I may, so in preparation of that meeting, Ari, um, if you can provide what it would look like if we were to go, if we decided to, you know, to pursue this, and what a debt exclusion would look like for the taxpayers based on the, the thirteen million, seven, two, five?
Yeah, we have, we have, um, I actually have an analysis already on fifteen.
Okay.
But I could, I could certainly do thirteen, seven, two, five. That's, that's no problem at all.
Okay, either, I think the fifteen might be fine too, if, you know, just to, to have both of those.
I shall provide both.
Right. I ju- I just think that that would be relevant to the discussion.
Yep. Just, i- it, it looks like it's about, um, paying how you smoothed the debt and everything, but it looks like it's about two hundred and sixty dollars per average single-family household, assuming that you, uh, at fifteen, and that's assuming that you do a twenty-year note, um, occur at about four percent rate and, um, uh, you, uh, finance it over, you know, over, over that period. So, yeah, it would, it would be, it would start out high and probably lower down over time because you tend to pay a flat amount of principal and the interest number goes down. But, yeah.
Okay.
Mister Chair, um, so I know that as a, as a board, we can make this decision on our own, but I think because, you know, there's a lot of people that have an opinion. I think that we should definitely bring it to the, town residents. So, um, as far as Ari's options, number four, not buy it. I'm not willing to do that one. So.
So, there are two ways you can bring it to the town. Um, just to make it clear, and, and again, I'm not trying to inject myself into the process at all here. I'm just giving you facts. There are two ways you can bring it to the town. Um, you can, the board could decide to exercise the right of first refusal. And then you, then you would think it's schedule a special election for the debt exclusion. And if that special election passes, then, you know, th- then, then, then you go. Um, if, if you don't do that, the, the alternative is you, you, you send it to town meeting. Town meeting has to vote, two-thirds vote, to make it pass through, and then they, and then they have to, and then as part of that article, it's scheduled the debt exclusion as well. So you still have to have, once the vote happens, you still, you still have to go back to town meeting, you know, to, to, to get it, to get it formalized. But that, that would be the process you, you could do. There's a couple of different ways you can come about, go about doing it.
Yeah, I just personally am not inclined to, um, send something to a ballot that folks don't have a chance to opine on. I would rather people approach the microphone and tell us how they feel at a town meeting, but that's just me. I'm just one person. Um, you know, because it is taxation. It is adding money to people's real estate. You know, um, real estate taxes, so, and, you know, we go through tax title property every year. And folks lose their homes because they can't pay their taxes, so I just really feel like the folks of Lakeville should be able to make this decision for themselves, but I'm just one person.
So if I can, just for, uh, purposes of, of procedure, so we would not necessarily, we can't vote in support of the right of first refusal unless we have a funding mechanism, correct, Ari?
Um, not credibly, no. You really can't. Not, not something that's large, no.
Right, so we would be bringing this to town floor and then to a ballot if, if it's voted on town floor, um, without the vote of having the first right of first refusal, correct? So that would come after if the town decided they did want to purchase the land and expend the fifteen million.
Yeah, you'd have to, um, probably the right way to do in terms of order of operations would be to have the, um, town meeting decide, because that's a two-thirds hurdle. Town meeting decide, yes, we're just in buying this property. And then, and then you say, I've sent it to a special election to find sedatics, to support, to pass a debt exclusion. That's a majority. Um, the, um, uh, the timing is very tight, as, as Rich indicated.
Right.
Um, so you, you really don't have a lot of wiggle room here in terms of timing. Um, so it really would have to go to the May sixteenth meeting.
Okay. On the special.
Yeah, yeah, presumably, yeah, I have to be on the special because you're doing it this fiscal year, so, yeah.
Okay, um, the only other thing that I would, uh, suggest is that, um, we certainly, besides us, our boards, you know, attending this meeting, um, certainly would want to make sure that people have the opportunity to, uh, to speak, okay? We could do one of two things, okay? We could do it in an in-person meeting at the library as a possibility. Or we could open up our meeting for anybody that wants to, um, ask a question or make a comment. Um, either way, it could be done, uh, without any restriction. Um, either way, it could be done, uh, without any restrictions. Now, of course, that's a lot more difficult to manage. You know, when you're looking across the board here and you've got fifty people, you know, there, um, that's fine. So I don't know if the board wants to, um. Um, hold an in-person meeting at the library, and maybe, um, at least invite the neighbors on, um. What is it, Stetson and Hot Court and, uh, Crooked Lane, um, just an idea, and so we can. Make sure everybody has the right facts, because a lot of times, as you know, that when we talk about things like that, this. There can be misinformation and we want to make sure that everybody has the same information, that's why. I want the boards to be, you know, as a group, so everybody's not saying, well, what this and that, no, no, everybody's gonna get the exact same information, so. So what do you, what is the board, how does the board feel about that?
And then we would have the other boards there with us.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I am in favor, I think this is, you know, important enough that we really need to give. You know, folks the opportunity to speak to it and to have the proper information, like you said.
Okay, um, so, is that you, Lorraine, you agree with that?
Oh, yeah, I, absolutely.
All right, so Ari, why don't we plan that and, um.
Yeah, we'll see if it's available, we haven't checked on that, so.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I was speaking out of turn because I don't know it's available either, but.
Can we, um, if, if I can, can we do both if people can't be? If, let's say people are on vacation or are unable to attend, that need to attend. Can we do part virtual? We could do an in-person and then part virtual?
Um, I have to see whether Lake Kim can support a hybrid in that room.
Okay. Yeah, that's, other than the, the high school, that's the biggest room we have, right?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's a hundred and seventy-five. Anyways, okay, so why don't we try to plan around that, and then, uh, Ari will let us know, you know, what we can and we can't do.
Okay, we'll dig into it tomorrow.
Okay, any other, any other questions on, uh? Lakeville Country Club, in case.
Uh, no, and I know there's some, some talk going on, on Facebook, and I think that's pretty much what folks are saying. They want the opportunity to, um, be able to speak to it in person, so. Um, I think that's the way we should go.
Are there any questions about it on there, Leah?
Um, no, just, I've screenshot a couple of things, just, um, some people asking for certain information on like the debt that the town is carrying. Right now, um.
I don't, hey, whoa, hold on a second, I don't see anything here on the chat.
Yeah, this is on, this is on the Facebook feed, so I've screenshot it, so I can go through it with Ari and make sure. We answer everyone's questions, um, before that night, maybe. Yeah, okay.
Right, all right.
If anybody has any comments or questions, they should be putting it on the chat.
Yeah, this one's on Facebook.
Because we don't have, I know, but we don't have.
No, I know.
You know, so the public.
I don't know if the public has access to the fit, to the Zoom chat.
Yeah.
No, they don't. But they have, they have access to this chat because it's, it'll show up here, and there's nothing in the chat right now.
I'm sure you're saying, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on that?
Oh.
Okay, number eight, is discuss nine hiding street electronic billboard, uh, proposal. Mark, I guess maybe you want to summarize this, there's a long history of this.
Yes.
That was approved by the, um, zoning board five years ago.
That's correct, um, had a meeting on March, now the meeting was, uh. Meeting of March sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, and filed on the thirtieth of two thousand seventeen, the board. Approved a, um, special permit to allow the construction of electronic billboard. That is higher and larger than specified under section seven point four of the, uh, zoning bylaw. Um, however, there was no specifications or plans filed with this. Aside from just the site plan showing where the sign was. But this was back in two thousand seventeen, that special permit is only good for two years. Um, there has been no filing to update the, uh, special permit. So, um, we, we, as the town, received a notification on March fifteenth. That the Office of Outdoor Advertising will hold a, uh, virtual public meeting. Um, April fourteenth concerning a proposal for, um, presumably that sign. They only sent the hearing notice, they didn't send any other information regarding or a link to, uh, any other information. On the sign, um. Since I, uh, have been working with the planning board on the, um, rewriting the, uh, sign bylaw. Uh, this spring, um, the planning board specifically, uh, defined electronic message boards. And, uh, proposed to prohibit them so that they wouldn't be allowed to receive, uh, special permits. They felt, um, it was not in keeping with the semi-rural character of, of Lakeville. And, um, they wanted to prohibit them, that was even before this application. The town received this notification, so.
Mister Chairman, if I may, um. Uh, this is the first time I've ever seen this go in front of Mass DOT, but, uh, because they've, they've exceeded the two-year, um, special permit process. Without acting on it, they would need to go back in front of the Lakeville zoning board, um, if they were looking to, um, have another. Application approved, is that correct, Mark?
Yes, that, that's correct, they'd have to make a filing, um, but, so. The, uh, the public hearing for the new zoning was posted, uh, last Thursday. So in effect, the, uh, proposed zoning changes are, are in effect now until town meeting. Um, are actually until they're approved, if they're passed by town meeting and, uh, until they're approved by the Attorney General. And then they're permanent after, after that.
So anything that would fall under, uh, any bylaw amendments at this time with the posting of the public hearing. Are basically on hold, just to clarify to the public.
Yeah, anything that would, uh, no longer conform with the zoning would be on hold. Until such time as was approved by town meeting and then the Attorney General.
Attorney General, okay, I just wanted to make that point clear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just so the boards put this into perspective, we're talking Route forty-four, that's nine hiding streets, so everybody knows. And what's being proposed, even though Mark has said we don't have any specs on, um, what they're proposing. But we know what they're proposing is a forty-foot by fourteen-foot billboard. Electronic billboard on both sides. These are the size of the, uh, electronic billboards that you see out on Route twenty, twenty-four. This doesn't belong here, it's just not the right, I, I don't know why it was approved in the first place, but. Anyways, so what I would suggest, Ari and Mark, um, is that, um, tomorrow, maybe you meet with, um. Because, uh, Nate was involved in this right from the beginning, five years ago, and yourself, and, uh. Talk to Amy so she could draft a letter for us, so we can send it. And I'll bring it to the meeting, on, somebody's got to go to that meeting on Thursday and object, you know, to this. I would s- I would say that the board probably should, uh, probably should vote to, uh, not recommend. Uh, based upon the expiry, expiration of the, uh, permit, uh, not to approve. Um, this, um, these electronic, uh, bulletin boards at nine hiding street.
I don't think that this falls under our, um, jurisdiction.
We can make a recommendation for the DOT.
Oh, for the DOT, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um. I know that we, there was another one proposed on Bedford Street, and we reduced the size of that one, didn't we? Or said we, it couldn't be bigger.
Well, we certainly have bylaws that, that lay out the, uh, sign, the size of the body, the size of the signs, that's not a problem. But in this particular case, I mean, this, this is.
Yeah, um, uh, Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that we, um, send a letter to the Department of Transportation. That we do not support this, um. Based on. The original permit being lapsed and the fact that we're trying to change the sign by law. If we can do it that way, as the reasons.
You want a second that, Lorraine, or?
Um, I would just say that we don't recommend, oh, I mean, just for purposes, we don't recommend supporting this, so I'll second.
Any discussion, um, just so the board knows, if you go back and you look at the original permit that was passed in March of, uh, seventeen. Uh, as strange as it was, Lorraine, the, um, the, the, the zoning board of appeals referred it to the Board of Selectmen. For them to approve it, which they should not have done either, but they did, you know. Okay, anybody else, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
Uh, the camera, I. Okay. Uh, number nine is discuss possible vote on new job descriptions for the health agent and the treasurer, collect, collector clerk. And the assistant facilities manager, um, Ari, um, has, um. Has brought to my attention just a little while ago, that, uh, he does not want to, uh, address the assistant. Facilities manager at this time because there seems to be, it's, it's not clear on, uh, what needs to be done, so we're not going to do that one. So, um, we're going to discuss the job description for the health agent, and, uh, basically, the health agent, um, position. Is, uh, is pretty much the same, um, it's just that we're taking it from, uh, a union to a non-union position. That's basically what the difference is. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description for the health agent.
Um, I'll, I'll, so, wow, so move discussion, please.
You want a second, please, Lorraine?
A second.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so none of the language changed, correct, John?
Correct, I believe, um, that none of the other language changes, just a change to, uh, to non-union.
Okay, that was the only thing. Okay.
Any further discussion?
Um, and. Uh. I feel like we should have done the MOA before this, but. That was my call, sorry, um, but the union has agreed to this, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Next one is the treasurer, collector clerk, um. Does, John, you want to give us an update on that, why that's being changed a little bit?
Sure, um, it's just some of the duties, I think, um, have changed a little bit, and it's, it's just been a number of years. Since this position has really been looked at, so I just think it's a, um, you know, more succinct version than what was previously in, in place. But the material facts of the job hasn't changed, it hasn't changed in terms of salary or anything like that, it's just a. You know, just being a little more concise about what the person actually does.
Okay. Um, I entertain a motion to approve the treasurer, collector clerk's, uh, job description.
No moves, so, second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Uh, hold on, I just, discussion, just going forward, John, I think it would help, um, I know it would help me. That if we had a, just a red line so that we knew what was being changed, because I'm looking at this and I'm, I'm, I'm fine with what I'm seeing. But I don't know what was, it changed from, so. That, that would just help going forward.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Number ten is discussing, uh, possible vote on the, uh, F twenty-three, uh, wage scale, uh, every year. Um, we, uh, update the wage scale for the non-union employees for, uh, cost of living increases. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, wage scale for, um, fiscal twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Again, I know that in the past, we've always had what it, what it was to what it's going to. Um, I would just appreciate that going forward, please.
You mean, you want last year's too, the same time?
Usually, yeah, just so, just so we had some comparison, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it's only, it's only the cost of living increases, and there was a couple of changes in job descriptions as you go. You know, during the year, so, okay, um, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Okay, next is, uh, discuss, number eleven is discuss a possible vote of the memorandum of understanding for firefighters, police and laborers' union. Um, John or, uh, Ari, do you want to? Tell us why we're doing this?
Um, this is a, uh, this is the, uh, implementation of the, um, discussion that we've had in prior. Regarding the affordability of healthcare for town employees hired after twenty seventeen, um, per the, uh, but, in, the budget anticipates this. It changes the, uh, cost shift from sixty-five to thirty-five, also incorporates new offerings, including the high deductible plan. And it, and a move to the, uh, to the gateway standard, which has a, uh, a, a modest deductible as well, um, as part of there. There are also a few givebacks from the, um, uh, with the unions that were discussed, and few concessions, one of which was the, um. Excuse me, one of which was moving the, um, health agent out of the union, um, in addition to that, there is a, uh, accommodation made in. Fire regarding, uh, certification and, um, in, uh, medical certification and in, uh, with the police as well on, on hiring steps. Um, Johnny, want to add anything?
No, I mean, I think you nailed it, I just, just very happy that we're moving forward with this.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, um, uh, to approve the memorandum of agreement between the. Tunnel Lakeville and the Massachusetts Labor's District Council International Union of North America. F A F, F A F I L C I O, sorry. Effective, um, July one, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Okay, as I had a second there, all those in fa- uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
Camera, I. I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of, uh, agreement between the Tunnel Lakeville and the, in New England. Police Department Association Local one eighty-five, uh.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, effective July one, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
You got a second there?
Yep, second.
Thank you, all those, any discussion, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I, uh, memo of an agreement, make a motion, somebody make a motion to appoint, uh. Memorated agreement between the Tunnel Lakeville and the Lakeville Permanent Firefighters, I A F F, local. Three, thirty-one, eighty-eight, effective July one, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
Uh, the camera, I. Okay, number twelve is discuss memo received from, uh, town clerk regarding the, uh, park commission election, uh, results. Um, there was, uh, three members of the park commission that didn't run this past term. And for this upcoming term, and, um, there was one write-in. Uh, Michael Smith was a writing candidate, candidate for both three-year, two-years, unexpired terms. Mister Smith defined the three-year term and accepted the two-year unexpired term. That leaves two vacant positions on the park commission for three-year terms. Um, so into Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section ten eleven. Select board and the three members of the park commission would need jointly to appoint two members to fill the vacant terms until the next election. In two thousand and twenty-three, when the appointees would have to run, uh, for the balance of the term. Uh, does the board want to advertise these vacancies on the, uh, town website and, uh, our Facebook page?
Yes, yes, Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that we advertise the vacancies. Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we advertise the vacancies. But could we also put an end date on there because I know the CPA folks are anxious to get their committee together? But I believe, in my opinion, we should be asking a full board of the park commission, a full board of the, um, open space to be recommending a member. We shouldn't be asking from a partial board. So can we say two weeks?
Well, we can probably try to do something on the twenty-fourth, so why don't we, um, what's that Friday before the twenty-fifth there? Our next meeting is on April twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So what's that, that would be this twenty-fifth, twenty, twenty-five to twenty, twenty-third?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, thank you.
Yeah, twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Did you make a?
Yeah, I make a motion that we advertise for the vacancies, um, through April
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Thank you. Okay, um, discuss impossible vote to approve the Sunken Island Triathlon on July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay, um, Lakeville Board of Selectmen, who?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is, they don't use our water, right? This is to swim. This is the one that Tracy, that they go. They just put the bikes.
This is a cathedral camp, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
So, um, unfortunately, uh, Tracy, the map didn't come out here, so.
Yeah.
We can't see the streets. I know it's only on the, uh, no, Log Point Road and then down that way, it's, so it's not really coming. Most of it's through Lakeville, but even though they do have a description here of the roads that they're going to, uh, um, to go to use. So, um, this is, um,
I still feel comfortable making a motion to approve.
Um, okay, you want a second that, I was, you want a second that motion, Lorraine?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, um, just so the board knows, as the policy that we put together, um, the public way license application has been filled out and has been submitted, you know, to the town, so everything is okay.
Okay.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
Um, I just, I know they're looking for a recommendation on the donation. I don't know if anyone has one.
Well, they haven't told us how much they're going to donate it, so.
Okay.
Maybe, um.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says a portion of the race proceeds, so we can do that later, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Okay, uh, number fourteen, actually, number fifteen should have been first before fourteen, but that's okay. Discuss impossible vote to request the Open Space Committee to appoint Joan Morton to the Open Space Committee. I'll entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Joan Morton to the Open Space Committee and the term expire at, uh, July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to note, Joan is filling the vacancy, um, from Adam Young.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Number fifteen, review of possible votes except the letter of resignation, um, from, uh, Donna Wabick, Wabick, from the Open Space Committee. This letter is to notify you that I have relocated and therefore resigned from the Open Space Committee as of twelve thirty-one, twenty-one. Okay, I enjoyed my tenure here and everybody involved. So we need to entertain a motion to accept her resignation from the Open Space Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank her for her time. And Tracy, you do the thank yous, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well.
Number sixteen.
Did we vote?
I'm sorry, did we vote? No, I'm sorry.
I don't think we voted on that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Okay, number sixteen is, uh, review and vote to accept, oh, we, I'm sorry, yeah, there's another one here, I missed that one. Review and possible votes after a letter, letter for resignation from Nora Klein from the zoning board of appeals. And then because she got elected to the planning board, I'll entertain a motion to, um, accept the resignation of, uh, Nora Klein from the, um, zoning board of appeals effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, no, but we have, um, two associate members, that leaves two associate members, right, Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have to, um, advertise for that position too, and then figure out either appoint one of the associates to the full-time or see what they want to do, right?
Correct. Cause they'll make a recommendation, if I'm not mistaken, they'll, they'll make a recommendation.
Yes. All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we go back for one second to agenda item number fourteen?
I'm going to skip through my papers here.
Did we, did we say that we were going to advertise that vacancy for the open space?
No.
We, we, I'm sorry.
The open space vacancy is already being advertised.
Okay. Okay, all right, cause that's, yeah, that's another one of the committees that, um, needs to appoint someone to the, um, the community preservation committee there. So it'd be nice if we could have a full board when we do that, when that gets done, when they vote.
Okay, uh, number seventeen, uh, I'll entertain a motion to review a possible vote to select board meeting minutes of March twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
Uh, the camera, I. Okay, anything on the new business? Anything on the old business?
Um, just if I could read the letter, um, we had made that donation. Um, and we received the letter from the Friends of the Lakeville Council on Aging. So to the select board, the Friends of the Lakeville Council on Aging would like to thank you for choosing our group to be the recipient of five hundred dollars from the Sun Multi-Sport Events. That money will be put to good use at the C O A. Thank you again for thinking of us. Sincerely, Linda Yule, President. Um, I know they always do so much with any donation they get there, so I just wanted to read that one.
Okay, um, Lorraine, you're the serpent representative and is the most special recognition in commission awards, request for nomination, so I don't know if we need to do anything about this right now, or?
But we can certainly discuss if there's, um, you know, anybody we would like to nominate, um, as a special recognition or even the commissioner of the year, that would be a vote of this board. Planning board, obviously, would, you know, would do the same. Um, I can, what I would like to say is that Barbara Mankowski, um, who did not run for reelection on the planning board, served as the serpent commissioner, um, for the planning board. And, um, you know, I would like to just express my gratitude for her service and, and participation in that, uh, for those years. Uh, she was committed, involved, participated, um, and did provide feedback to, um, her, her board. So.
So, are you proposing to do something then, or?
Well, um, I mean, that would be, that would come from us, but, um, I mean, I would certainly, you know, like to maybe recommend her as the commissioner of the year, um, for serpent.
So the commission? A member, okay, I got it, I got it. Um, sure.
Yeah. Yep, Barbara attended those meetings loyally, faithfully. Brought back a lot of information. I, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I will put something together and, and submit our, our nomination.
Okay, thank you.
We need a vote on it, or can we just do that?
Make it official, if you'd like, or?
We can, I don't know what it's, what does it say? I don't even know what says the name. I guess anybody can do it. Doesn't necessarily have to come from the board, I don't think, but whatever you want to do, whatever you want to do, if you want us to vote on it, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just make the recommendation, uh, formal.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody want to do that?
I'll make the rec, uh, I'd like to nominate, um, or make the recommendation that we nominate Barbara Mankowski of the planning board, um, as the, uh, commissioner of, of the year at Serpents, um, annual, uh, recognition twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
The camera, I. Okay, uh, anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Baby and I.
Camera, I. Okay, thank you.
All right.